Oh, no, I don't, I don't wish for my way. I just want to see how it is while I'm home.
All right, call the work. Row call.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Chairman Landers.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Bladens.
Here.
And Commissioner Wilhoy.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a quorum, eight members present, one absentee.
All right, approval of the agenda.
Looks good.
No changes to our proposals.
Motion approved.
Yes, thank you.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, sixty-five saying aye. Post, motion carries. Approval of the meeting minutes from April the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Lisa sent those out to everybody. Did they look okay?
Did we get this?
Did you say, did you get?
Yeah, did we get this?
Yeah.
She said aye.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion, seconded, all in favor, sixty-five saying aye. Post, motion carries. Stu with comments.
I don't have anybody signed up. Anybody like comment? No?
Saying, moving on to old business, there's none, so we'll move into new business. This is rezoning. West Lane Street, tax map, eighty-eight D, GRP A, partial one. George Hannah, one of, and representing all the property owners, is requesting a favorable recommendation to the planning commission of the city council for rezoning to approximately two point five nine acre partial from I-one light industrial to C-two general business. The partial is identified in the future land use map as mixed density residential character area.
All right, he's right on topic. Yeah. Uh, let's see. Um, so if you notice, I reorganized it. Um, thank you, Ginger, uh, for helping me out with that. Uh, so eight-eleven, eight-thirteen, West Lane Street is currently zone I-one. And it's about two point five nine acres, and I know that Mr. Hannah, what they were, um, what would they would like to do is a general business and convenience store and gas sales use. Um, there's a lot of barriers to rezoning. Uh, I can go through each of them, but there's, uh, there's inconsistencies with the future land use map for, um, rezoning to see, actually, for even I-one, uh, it's problematic. That whole area historically has been I-one. And that's why, um, in our comments, uh, one of the issues too is that it's not contiguous with any, um, C-two. You can see here that, uh, back in two thousand twelve, it was subdivided and created as an I-one type of subdivision and use. There's still warehouses on there, um, and regardless of what the, the rezoning is, the two warehouses, the warehouse would become a non-conforming use, and it would also be, uh, non-compliant with the setbacks. The only thing, uh, the milk building, which is the brick building, um, that one, if it was a rezone to C-two, would become compliant. Uh, there is a, uh, vehicle repair shop in there right now, which is conforming to either I-one or C-two. You see from the, uh, two thousand nine map and even going back to two thousand four, that area was always historically I-one. Uh, it's still currently I-one, uh, even in the aerial photograph, when you go back to, uh, even past to the, or nineteen ninety-two, it's always been, uh, similar type of use. Uh, majority of the area around it, you can see, is still the I-one or light industrial type of use. I mean, I don't, personally, I don't doubt that it should be redeveloped at some time. It's just that under our zoning code, it is, uh, you can see, actually, well, we'll ask anybody in the audience with this. You can see that, uh, this part here is a split zone property, I-one, and a part is R-three. So if this were to be rezoned, you would have this, this, oh, spot or pocket that is, um, C-two. It doesn't, our future land use map shows this whole area as, right here, as the R-three, which is inconsistent with both the I-one and C-two zones.
Uh, Tom, is that, there's a store down the road, just a little bit, is that a non-conforming use there, or is that a zone commercial?
Um, which, which direction is?
Um, it'd be west.
Uh, West Lane Market.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, oh, oh, West Lane Market, it is, it is a non-conforming, yes, yes. Uh, 'cause we looked at that one in, uh, last month's recent application. And that is a not, I think that's in the R-three zone as well. Uh, that's more of a commercial use.
It's only existing use in that area.
Yes, yes. Very good. All right, um, uh, so, you know, with the number of barriers, the recommendation was unfavorable recommendation. Um, and then unless the planning commission wants to disagree with that assessment. Oh, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions, Pauls?
I think he's kind of laid out the plan, it seems like this, he's got a lot of, the owners will have a lot of, uh, things to get by to get there, our future land use map.
Sure.
So.
And, and I don't doubt that that, um, in my opinion, I think it could use redevelopment. It's just that within our zoning ordinance, we're limited in, um, in kind of catching that hurdle.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that a better plan or something may come, the future might bring something else. But this time I propose a, 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 a motion to send a negative, uh, negative proposal to the city council.
Unfavorable.
Yes. Unfavorable. Y'all help me with my words.
All right.
Unfavorable recommendation.
Got a second to that. I do have a second, row call.
If you agree with the unfavorable recommendation to the city council, you will say yes on our call. Mayor Carroll.
Yeah.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bladens.
Yes.
Chairman Landers.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilhoy.
Yeah.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
All right, B, another rezoning, two eighteen Eaton Boulevard, tax map ninety-eight, GRP A, partial thirty-three, one oh eight, Josh Bobo, representing Cooper Steel Fabricators, on behalf of the property owner, the Sheffield Industrial Board, is requesting a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to the city council for rezoning approximately point three-three acres from C-two general business to I-two general industrial, with the intention of combining with a larger I-two zone parcel. Partial is identified in the future land use map as mixed density residential character area.
Okay, so, um, this entire area, if I go to my, well, let me start off. The intention is to combine that parcel with this larger parcel here. This is, uh, over six acres. In the rezoning, it will become non-conforming and unbuildable under the I-two. But then when the, uh, plat is reported, that will be remedied if, if, um, city council decides to approve it and doubt it. Uh, these buildings will be, or actually that building is already gone, but this building will be demolished as before the plat is recorded. Uh, and you can see the intention here is, uh, to combine into that larger tract land there. Um, this whole area, the future land use map, uh, is inconsistent with the development in that area because most of this area has been industrial since for over fifty years. And, uh, there's nothing changed about that. Uh, so you can see, this is the future land use map, it shows this whole area as a, uh, mixed density residential, which is inconsistent. Uh, this, this back area here, they are actually R-three zoning. This whole area has, has historically been industrial.
You're, you're just talking behind, uh, behind those, uh, buildings right there. There's residential new homes that were built across the street there. That's, that's been going in the last ten, five years, I guess. And then, of course, the school is down, the high school and everything's down to the right down there.
Yes.
And then our senior citizen center is down there in the corner, right there. And then, uh, we own the, uh, block, you know, corner lot.
Right here.
Yeah.
And Cooper Steel actually owns all three of these lots.
So how much of that has been industrial you're talking about? Because there's mobile home park that borders it on the other side.
Yes, and that's historically been the same.
That's okay, all right.
The industrial uses have been mostly within here and here.
Okay, okay.
I believe this, yes, I believe this building dates back to nineteen seventy-six. Um, this was always industrial and it's probably easier to see on here. So all this area was industrial, the mobile home park, that, that was, that was a mobile home park. But, um, at some point, uh, they were rezoned to make it a non-conforming use, and hopefully in some future time, uh, it'll become conforming again. And you can see from the two thousand nine map, this is all I-two area here. Now, the, the parcel that is being requested to be rezoned, that area was C-two. Even though, oh, even the senior center, oh, now let's see. Yeah, so this whole area, I think it was I-two. Yeah. Like, oh. Uh, and, uh, so, you know, although the, uh, rezoning will temporarily create a non-conformity and an unbuildable lot, once it's combined, it'll become conforming again. And, um, whoa, uh, I forget that, put that at the beginning now. Uh, and, and so that was the reason because, and I've been putting, uh, and you'll notice in the report as well as in here, I've been putting the reason how I'm coming to the conclusion, the reason that we're doing a favorable record, staff is recommending favorable recommendation to the city council.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Just a general comment, I'll raise your question. Um, we really need to at some point fix that future land use back because we just had two back-to-back where the argument on the first one was, it doesn't hold with the map. So we want to be unfavorable now, we're gonna take the exact same map and take the exact same opposite argument. And I think that's hard for developers and people that are looking, you know, develop property in the city to know what's gonna happen with their property.
Yes, and.
And I think with the current, with the, you know, with the current development in that area, that's going towards the industrial area. I mean, it's very active. I think that that kind of is in consideration maybe of our, our decision.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with the recommendation, I'm just saying in general, yeah, I understand how you got there, but we need to fix at some point the future land use map.
Yes, and that, um, and that's part of my, that's part, yeah. Uh, that is my, part of my, uh, what I'm working on actually. Because, um, one of the things that we don't have, um, that's even codified, is when do we actually review the, you know, there, there's a, I think there's a general statement that we should review our future land use map for that. And, you know, and some of the ways that we can also cure it in the near future, these discrepancies is the use of overlays.
But what, but it's one of the hardest things too, you know, because it is a future land use, what we see in the future, and a lot of times that changes before the future gets there. So it's, it's kind of always moving document that should be revised and over and over.
Sure.
Because of that, these situations.
And, and one of the things, oh, sorry, no, that's.
It needs to reflect the reality on the ground, and I think that the distinction between the two allegations you have here.
Yeah.
Plan on the second one doesn't reflect the reality on the ground.
True, if we were making the map today, we would have already had it. They would have been all, you know, that's what it is, but, yes.
And that, and our map's not that old, it's just a few years old and it's already behind, yeah.
Yes, well, they'd really like you to look at it every year.
Yes.
Doesn't mean you have to change it every year, but.
That is what's changed.
I like, I like, well, I like a motion for a favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion made, seconded, row call.
Uh, let's see, Commissioner Wilhoy.
Yeah.
Mayor Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Is she? Sorry. Chairman Lenders?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
That goes to the city council with the favorable recommendation.
Okay, another rezoning, Highway 231 North, 2746, tax map 59, parcel 14. Paul Perry, Shelbyville Airport Director, representing the city of Shelbyville, property owner is requesting a favorable recommendation to the planning commission to the city council for rezoning approximately 35.35 acre parcel from C2 general business to I1 light industrial. A portion of the parcel is for the MPSU Flight Academy and Tanger. Partial is identified in the future land use map as north gateway corridor character area.
Okay, uh, so this is actually 30.35 acres that we're looking at. The, the remaining portion is the light estate, and that's remaining as a C2. Um, uh, one of the issues that we ran into with this one is that the, uh, MPSU Flight School is more consistent with the I-1. Um, but one of the ways that we're going to correct, uh, not having to rezone is to do an airport overlay, but that's, that'll be coming towards the end of the year. Um, there's, there's some, there's already talk that between, uh, Paul and I about doing that as well as with staff, but, uh, for now, um, in order to, uh, bring MPSU back online and actually, uh, get their site plan approval, which was in, uh, which is in the queue already, uh, staff is requesting that it be rezoned to I-1, which is light industrial matching the airport and will allow MPSU to, uh, build their, uh, cat, uh, their, actually their academic flight operations and repair anger. Um, let's see, so this is the area that we're talking about, uh, back in 2023, it was brought in, uh, both the light estate as well as this larger tract of land where MPSU is on the northern part, uh, was brought in as C2 general business. The non-conforming buildings that are already on the property, they're, they're single-family residential, uh, they're vacant properties right now, they will be demolished. And you see that from the future land use map, it is a north gateway corridor. It doesn't quite mesh up with the, oh, I-1 is, uh, is technically, um, recommended to be in the business, uh, the industrial part. Uh, however, you know, since we have the airport that is also I-1, uh, it's contiguous and it'll fit nicely in there. You can see from the aerial photograph.
You're not talking about rezoning any of the property that borders with 231 North that is not the 20.8 acres that MPSU is getting?
It, it's, uh, so, so how we're going to, um, because I, I talked to Scott about this too, because I know that a portion of it was reserved for, um, commercial.
That's right.
So how we're gonna fix that is by doing an overlay that will allow commercial, it can be overlaid over top of an airport overlay zone that will allow not only commercial on this side, wherever, uh, I can't remember where Paul was, uh, wanting to do the commercial, but it'll allow commercial on that section as well, regardless of the underlying zone. So we can do an overlay on there, which is a typical to a rezoning process, um, that will allow for that type of use as well as, um, any type of commercial use.
I just don't see why you changed it from C2 on the property that's not MPSU's, uh, Flight Academy where that's going to be, but that's, that remains the city of Shelbyville, so you're wanting to develop that as commercial.
Yes, and, and you will be able to without having to do any kind of, uh, the reason why we had to do this is because there was no subdivision of this property. Uh, it was never, it was all rezoned C2, and that section was never subdivided out.
You've got to do all of it to I-1?
Yes, it's, it is site-specific, so when you rezone, it is the boundary of the quarter, uh, since policy-wise, we don't do, uh, split zoning. I mean, technically, you could do a split zoning. I mean, it, it's not, it, it.
Yes, please, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say, part of the reason is we don't have it actually, um, surveyed out yet. Portion of that will be surveyed out. MPSU just received state approval of their amendment lease agreement. Uh, if y'all remember several months ago, you all approved that. So they're actually, we're waiting, that's going through the process right now.
That's why it wasn't subdivided.
That's why we don't have it yet, we don't have it quite there to go to the subdivision.
Sure.
So if we had that subdivision, had the survey, and subdivided out, we would do it, but I think the issue is they need to go ahead and get.
Yes, they need to start.
They need to start, intention needs to start, so, I mean, and we could actually, if we did an overlay or once we get the survey, we know, can we, and we bifurcate it out, you know, pull it out, then we could rezone it. It's not, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
That process, if it's like 16 acres and then they got 4.8 acres after that, so.
Yes.
20.8 acre, I just didn't see why you would need them, but I, I see where Ginger's pointing in, but then to get started, we might need to go ahead and rezone it for I-1, and then we could come back, yeah.
Well, the benefit of doing an overlay is you can actually expand the types of uses. So if Paul needed to do an industrial, uh, on some other portion of the airport that was, or, uh, I should say that was more, um, uh, the types of uses that are like airport type uses, he could do that. If you wanted to do a commercial, oh, leave the, write it next to the 231 commercial, you could do that, it just is written within the overlay. And that's one of the, the beauties of the overlay is that, uh, you can actually write in there what types of uses are in there. So, uh, for example, like on the bypass, which is where we're gonna work on as well, you can do, um, where the overlay has the mixed puddle type uses. So that means that a person can come in there without having to rezone, uh, they would, but they would need to apply the overlay onto it, which is another rezoning process, but it'll expand the types of, uh, development that they can do there.
You don't like that's confusion?
Uh, no, no, well, here, here's what it does, is that it, uh, it alleviates the spot zoning, you know, the problem where you have, oh, you know, different types of uses, you know, the underlying zoning, uh, with an overlay, you can do any type of, oh, uses adjacent to it.
Once it's tracked out, it's not for sale, so it really doesn't matter, right? Once it's tracked out, the city's not planning on selling it, I assume.
No, there's.
So.
Yeah.
Possible.
Yes, and.
Any of that on 231 North, at this point, now, it may change in future.
Yes, and I, and I'll, oh, I'm gonna be working on both the airport overlay. Yes. Well, as the bypass overlay in the next couple of months. Um, I don't think that the city's gonna be ready to do any type of commercial development in that time period, but I just wanna, um, make it, uh, have it ready, so. Thank you.
That's a chance, okay? I'll entertain a motion. Motion to send a favorable recommendation to the city council.
All right. I have a second, roll call.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Commissioner Will Hoy?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Chairman Lenders?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
All right. Site plan. 39,342 square foot new parking lot and access drive 206, 208, Terry Street. St. John Engineering, representative property owner, John English, is requesting approval from the planning commission for a new parking lot for 27 acres. An access drive serving two parcels under the same ownership, currently is on C2 general business parcels or under single ownership, a minor subdivision application for a lot line shift permit the, uh, installation of a parking, received administrative approval in this review cycle.
Okay. These are the three policies that we're looking at here, uh, this area, uh, John English owns all three of them. And, uh, historically, there's been no parking lot there. Um, it was just, well, I should say it was a gravel lot that people, uh, parked in there. Um, I went back to, uh, I think 20 years, and there's never been, there was only this gravel area. And so what Mr. English is proposing, and I'll go back to my opinions on that, uh, is the, it's all an actual parking lot. Uh, so he's actually improving the condition there, it's, it's essentially a, a non-conforming, uh, or not, with our codes as far as parking goes, and he's establishing that, uh, by doing a shared parking lot in this area. This becomes a, uh, ingress, regress, uh, access to, all the way back to this part of here, this parcel back here, and then we have, uh, the stormwater detention, which is also an improvement for the site. Um, all the conditions, this act, this project actually came in a couple of years ago, uh, so it's a, but it was not because of us that delayed it, it was just the owners, uh, doing other projects, I suppose. Uh, the staff is recommending approve with the two conditions down here, which is that, um, it's based off of the 423 resubmital, and then the plat, which is in the administrative approval for lot ownership to accommodate it, uh, that that has to be reported before any kind of permits are issued, and then the stormwater management agreement is reported, flipped, reviewed, and, oh, and approved, and then reported, and then the long-term, uh, maintenance agreement is approved.
Since that building has been remodeled for some.
That's stormwater.
Yeah, uh, are you talking about this building?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, there, there are actually, this, I don't know what happened to the previous building, but that building, oh, there was foundation there. The building existed, I think, up until about maybe five years ago.
Yeah, maybe so.
Uh, based on the area.
It's pretty nice, actually, it's made it look good, it's not impeccable. You'll have, actually have access to Terry Street and, um, so you still be here?
Uh, no, it doesn't go, um, there, there's another access.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
But it's just reserved, what this access does is bring us in the secondary access.
Motion in.
Motion to approve. Fair. Where does it come in? This one's approved.
Yeah, second. By the second in row call.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Chairman Lenders?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Commissioner Will Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, major subdivision preliminary plat. Serving Lexington Cove Phase 1 P cottages in Divine Street and Lexington Cove Boulevard, the Preserving Lexington Cove hood, tax map 79, parcel 23, and 23.04. St. John Engineering is representing the owner, Serving Lexington Cove LLC, requesting approval to amend the previous preliminary plat for 17 cottages and adding 25 additional cottages for a total of 42 cottages on 7.32 acres. Uh, the zoning approved as the planned unit development cottages are in accordance with the Tennessee horizontal property regime H R, H P R.
Okay, so this is, um, back in, I believe it was in November, there was a, a phase line that created the 17 cottages, and what this one does is basically shift that phase line to include, um, a total of 42 cottages. Um, so, uh, staff is recommending approval based on, um, conditions that they address all the comments from Shelbyville, uh, all, all our staff, but mostly Shelbyville Power. Uh, you see, this was the, this is the new phase line, and I'll move forward to this one. This was what was approved in November. So in essence, this phase line is shifting over to include the remaining portion of it, and it was done, um, uh, for, mostly for their own legal purposes, it was easier to create one entire, uh, phase of all the cottages when it came to their HOA or their covenants and restriction, um, documents. It meets or it matches the concept plan, that's where the cottages are, it's a horizontal property regime, and, uh, you can see the, this is the utilities plan that the applicant has been working on with Shelbyville Power. Uh, there's only a couple of comments left to address after, um, you know, since the time that it was submitted. So we're not looking at extensive amounts, uh, and for that reason, uh, staff is recommending the approval of the preliminary plat with those conditions, uh, these are the conditions down here. Um, and a lot of these are within the construction phase or at the end of the project, so.
Is this adding to the total that we approved, 146, 160?
No, uh, so, let me go to the concept plan here, uh, or, uh, this was from the pattern book, I should say. So the number of units is, is, oh, it's gonna start with the pattern book, and so what they've done is, uh, right here was the phase line of the November approval, so this is just amending that line to make all of it into one phase of the project.
Okay, he's just talking about the phasing, as far as the number of units.
Yes, sir.
They remain the same, that was my question.
Yes, yes.
The utility things that are still conditions, part of the discussion of pre-planning was they were having trouble squeezing all the utilities in because of the, that dense space. Are they, did they come to a conclusion, are they gonna be able to get all 42, or they still gonna have to drop one or two cottages to make it work?
No, uh, because there was, uh, and Nathan's here with, uh, who can answer more specifically about the technical, I didn't put the technical parts in terms of gang boxes and things like that.
Yeah, I didn't want that, I was just curious if we were able to get all 42 and the utilities and not hit his, I know John Freeman didn't watch it too closely.
Utility setbacks and all this stuff that he. Yes, yes, we were able to work through that, we had to go through a couple of iterations, but we're able to get shovel power and water sewer, uh, packing with separations.
Okay, so 42 is.
Yeah, we didn't have to remove many units or like resize them or anything like that, yeah.
All right. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the, uh, long list conditions.
I have a second, roll call.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Commissioner Will Hoy?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Tom, you know how I feel about these conditions?
Yes, sir, and, uh, let me just go back to them, because, uh, these ones down at the bottom here, uh, stormwater agreement, that's just a general condition that they have to do those things. Final plat, that goes, that's at the very end of it, and I've been putting them on each of the ones only so that it's just there's consistency throughout the, uh, uh, project, but for major ones like traffic studies and things like that, those are the ones that I think we need, well, I understand that is more.
Tom, I had talked about these conditions, and they got to do this and all that, but after it goes past the plan, planning commission, and I, I would like to get those things wiped out, they're approved before it ever comes to us.
Uh, well, part of it is we can't, we can't do the ones down here, uh, for stormwater agreement, uh, those ones are still being, you know, under construction as well as the final plats, and then, um, this is a, my comment to make sure that the pattern book is amended at the end of the project. Um, this, these two up here, uh, this is just a basically stating that the last, the, uh, April 30th, 2025 plat, resubmital is the one that we're, you know, that I'm asking planning commission to approve, and then, oh, that utilities was a later date when it was approved, so.
There's still work on.
Yes, sir.
Your vote.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Chairman Lenders?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Agreed with the mayor, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, major subdivision preliminary plat, preserve Lexington Cove Phase Two B, single-family lots in the Thoroughbred Road, preserving Lexington Cove Hood, Tax Map seventy-nine, Partial twenty-three and Tax Map seventy-eight, Partial ninety-five point oh one. St. John Engineering, representing the property owner, Preserving Lexington Cove LLC, is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for twelve single-family lots, partials totaling three point two-five acres. Rezone, zoning approved as a planned unit development.
Okay, so in this case, we do have dedication of right of way, so. Oh, to my slide, you see that note at the bottom. This is for twelve single-family lots on three point two-five acres. The total acreage is seventy-eight point seven-one and then the total number of single-family dwellings that were, yes. Oh, that's, that's one hundred and eighty out of it that were approved in the plat.
That says one B, are we on two B?
We're on two B.
I was on F. I just want to make certain because they're different from, that's different from here.
Yeah, that's a one B up there. This, this is two B.
Yeah, this is two B, sorry.
That's okay, just, just wanted to make certain.
All right, so we have the twelve single-family lots. You see here's where the top would intersection is. It's consistent with the adopted pattern book. As far as the number of units goes, they haven't built out all their single-family lots. This is just the, the first phase. We actually had that, yeah, it should be two B. We actually had them labeled with the letters to clarify. So in the staff opinion and recommendation, approve the preliminary plat with conditions. Sorry about that. This one has the, we have a dedication of the right of way. So there's an essential nexus on this one. And you can see that's serving the twelve residential lots. And then the comments that were part of the utility, I placed them out here as well because there were some that were overlapping. And then these, the remaining ones are the same types of things. And I could put those inside, I could just generally put that they address all staff comments.
The degrees of those comments are not near someone that would be concerned.
No, no, none of these, none of these.
But I'm with, I'm with, I don't like any conditions at all, but I do understand.
And that is what we did.
To give your proposal for this group, after all those conditions left, if, but you said it was, it can't be happened.
Yeah, these are typical, these ones that are related to construction are typical, so.
You can almost verbalize those, leave them all conditioned.
Those R ones are the ones that are backing up to the existing subdivision there. That's, that's what we agreed to, that they would build R ones. You see the line?
Yes, these have, you know, I actually didn't put the phasing, I should put the phasing. There's a phase document that shows the phases and this is.
They back up to, what is that subdivision called? What is it?
Greenhouse.
Greenhouse. That's on Greenhouse, yeah.
That on this side and it's a, it's a much later dot.
I think that was agreement to the folks living there, yeah.
Yes, I'll make sure that, because I know that there's going to be more that comes in for the, I can make sure that's in there, so.
Question, yeah, general question about the development. Where do we end up on improvements on Union Street? What did we, what's being done on?
On T dot, from T dot?
Well, Jim, what's the developer doing on Union Street? Are we adding just a turn lane or what do we do? What do we, or are we?
You're preempting me, it's in the next one.
Okay.
It's in the next lot. Oh, yeah, you, in the next, so they haven't triggered that part of it yet until the next one with the townhomes.
So they're not required until the, the trigger against the townhomes, they can get through this.
Yes, because.
This phase or whatever, and then the other one would trigger that.
Yeah, so in the original approval of the plat, it was the traffic, basically off-site improvements were going to be triggered at phase two. And that had to do with the townhomes that are connecting up them that are across from Morton Street. And then as far as on Union Street, are you referring to the?
Union and five. Yeah, Union and five, yeah, yeah.
Yes, that one is not, that one hasn't been triggered yet. So and then, well, you'll see in the townhomes, one, the portions that they have to work on.
Are we not on two B, does it not follow two A, which is the townhouse, which is being built first? Or how were we built in these?
Phase two is phase two. The only reason why there's the letter A and B is so that we can later on, we understand which ones are actually being built, but it's phase two.
Okay, so A and B are being built at the same time?
Yes, yes, okay.
I'll try to answer your question on, on the Vine Street. The Vine Street, we had a special with T dot at the end of April. And what they, we're going to follow the traffic study that was outlined and it'll be a dedicated left turn lane into Vine Street. That's part of Phase One construction plans and is currently under review with T dot right now. Make sure that distances and everything.
So that'd be coming from piggly wiggly in towards town, you'll have a middle turn lane that'll turn left into Vine.
Right, yeah, and we're also doing some, making sure that the tapers and lane shifts as you're going out of town are also given, given, because that was one of T dot's concerns as well as Public Works is because we're going to be doing a lane shift and from two lanes down to one, but also it's going to get some right turn into Vine Street. So we're going to make sure that all those, the striking and everything is properly shown on there and that's one thing we're under review.
And that goes to Max Street, doesn't it? Doesn't that go to Max Street? The part of that expansion?
No.
Yeah, that was, we had a, we had a follow-up review with T dot and then concurrence from the city. So that's, that's the case. And so that was, that was the permit that came. I think I had, I've got a copy of whatever it was, so it must be.
Is anything coming down at Green Hill Drive?
Oh, Nathan, if you could just say.
I'm sorry, by the way, my name is Nathan Nelson, I work for St. John Engineering.
Was anything coming down at Green Hill Drive?
Uh, it's green.
Where the, where the light is?
Uh, no, no, it wasn't supposed, there was nothing supposed to happen further up that way.
Well, there was a, there was a problem getting out on Union Street. That's said to be already. And now they're creating another traffic problem.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure where that, it doesn't affect that area. Yeah, I think you might, I wonder.
There's a street there that goes up to that, I can't remember the name.
Various, various, but I don't, I think it's, they're anticipating, you know, minimum impact to that. And the, the traffic study, I don't believe.
Yeah, it showed very little impact.
They had them sitting there fifteen minutes while waiting it out.
It's already, you're right.
Is this going to affect the, I don't know if you've noticed it or not, the funeral home has changed hands right there at the corner of Vine Street and they're adding on to that funeral home. You know what I'm talking about, Galloway Smith Funeral Home? It's changed hands and now they're adding on to it. I don't, this is not going to change the entrances and exits to that facility. Yeah, the turn lane should be passed that, right at Vine where the animal hospital is and, yeah.
Okay. When they're tied them up.
Let's see, approve with conditions.
I'll second.
Major second, roll call.
Commissioner Will Hoy?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Chairman Lenders?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee? Commissioner Mauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
All right. Major subdivision preliminary plat, preserve Lexington Cove Phase Two A. Townhomes in Tennessee horizontal property regime in the Thoroughbred Road and preserve Lexington Cove Hood, Tax Map seventy-eight, Partial ninety-five point oh one and Tax Map seventy-eight, Partial six. St. John Engineering, representing the property owners, Preserving Lexington Cove LLC, Brad McGee and Brett Fisher, requesting approval of preliminary plat for forty-four townhomes, partials totaling eight point seven-eight acres. The zoning approved as a planned unit development.
All right, so.
Yeah, the townhomes are going to shoot the H R P, okay.
Okay, so this is the townhome units that we're talking about, this is the concept plan. So this will approve as part of that pattern. You can see here, these are the townhome units, it's consistent with the pattern book. There's, there's plenty of parking for these townhome units and there's also overflow parking. And, and you know, the horizontal property regime here, you see that the, the private part of it is the townhome itself. They've got some other semi, private, or they have the common elements are the other areas that you see all around there. But at any rate, so this is where, you see, when I go to here and I highlighted it in red from our engineer, where we have some, some of the off-site improvement or the alignment that we're going to need on Morton Street. These were all discussed during the, the original plat approval part of it. And so this is the major portion that, that will be addressed at the construction phase. That part, let's see, yep. So it's all this portion up here that will be done at the construction phase. And staff has recommended approval of it based on these conditions. And the majority of these conditions are similar, similar to their ASB ones.
Just real quick, back to parking, are these garage units and how many parking spaces or outside parking spaces are there per unit that are concrete or?
Yeah, it, it looks like there's sufficient space for two on there. And then, which is what our code requires. And then you can see the overflow parking over here as well.
Do these have garage units now?
Yes, these are garage units.
Sort of, yeah, just storage units.
Yeah, no, nobody parks them, no. Okay.
Motion.
I'm going to get a motion to approve the long list of conditions.
Long list?
Yeah.
Motion made second, roll call.
Chairman Lenders?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Commissioner Will Hoy?
Yeah.
Mayor Carroll?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Major subdivision final plat amendment, park place seven unit townhomes, building on number eight in Tennessee horizontal property regime, nine, six, seven, Horse Mountain Road. Park place H R P, Tax Map seventy-eight, Partial thirty-two point oh two. Dan Bobo is representing Old South Town Home Owners, requesting approval of a final plat amendment adding utilities, that's on partials totaling point two acres. Zoning approved as a planned unit development. The townhomes are in accordance with Tennessee horizontal property regime.
Okay, so if you recall, back in July at a special call meeting, these buildings were actually approved as a final plat when Black Diamond Construction owned them. The units themselves were purchased by Old South and Building Eight is completed here and it's just, this is just amending easements on utility. There were no planning comments on there. But since the way that these are constructed, they have to come back each time for, when they're amending the plat for the easements. So this was all in the part of Shelbyville Powers. Step one, they did approval, but there were only these ones, this is the date that we received the final plat for the amendment. And then there will need to be a recording of that final plat. And then the as-built here, this is an engineering comments, just to make sure that we don't pop in. So if we can improve that with the, those three conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions, second.
Motion made second, roll call.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Commissioner Will Hoy?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
And Chairman Lenders?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Major subdivision variance of vested rights for Phase One McDale Point subdivision, formerly U Haven subdivision, single-family lots on McDale Lane, Tax Map sixty-nine, Partial five point oh eight. St. John Engineering, representing Gary Boyce Construction LLC owner, is requesting extension of vested rights in accordance with the Shelbyville municipal subdivision regulations, Article Two, Section two dash thirteen, six for Phase One. Thirty-two single-family lots on partial totaling eight point six-seven acres. It's zone R three, medium busy residential, vested rights expired for this phase on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, for the location, you see, this is off of McDale, just north of McDale, near the bypass. To tell you how rare this is for expiration of vested rights, I don't know anybody that's actually had to deal with something like this. And so our subdivision regulations, and actually the Tennessee code annotated, gives the flexibility for planning commission to make the decision on vested rights, make the extensions such as this. And just to, because we're talking about the same property and we're talking about Phase One and Two, I just combine them all into one and to discuss at the same time. But the voting will be separated out. So if you, I'll go through the vested one period here. So this is the vesting period sent chart from the municipal technical advisory service. And you see with the preliminary development plan, you have the date of issue and then once it's approved, you have three years. Now, once sub-preparation occurs, you have an additional two years to do so. And in this case, Phase One expired last year. And in the report, you'll see a lot of the details and I won't do admission with those. But so Phase One expired, Phase Two is set to expire on the twenty-seventh of this month. And then Phase Three and Four are also in jeopardy in July. And so this is the phasing map. This is what we're talking about. These five, six, seven, eight, which were on the phasing plan, they, there was no preliminary plat done for those. So they're not even considered, you know, they're, that requires a whole new design and supplemental. These are the ones that we're talking about here, is this side here. And you can see the dates of the expirations. This is Phase One, which was always, in staff's opinion, was problematic because of the number of units along McDale Road that would have had direct access. And I, I don't know if you recall that from past discussions on there. But this is Phase One, so it includes all of this. And this is the area that has been problematic with, with staff. And I can tell you that, you know, from what was discussed with Will Owen, it was just in the past, maybe the pre-planning committees weren't consistently done and it was just, it, it just didn't happen where the entire group got to review it. So even though this was approved by planning commission, it probably would have never been passed even back then, had it been fully vetted. So here we are, this one's, this Phase One has expired. And then I'll, I'll show you what Phase Two looks like. Phase Two is here and. Back. And because there's a lot of latitude. And because there's a lot of latitude in this and, uh, and, and Mr. Voice has put in, and Mr. Williams have put in a lot of effort into this. And then really the problematic one has always been that first phase. Uh, the recommendation that I, uh, provided for there is that this staff does not want to see those, um, those houses that are fronting on there and having direct access. And they're, uh, recommending or requesting of the planning commission that the first phase be denied for the extension, since that's already expired. Uh, but on the subsequent phases, um, just to, because, uh, when I was analyzing this project, this is in, uh, on our future land use map, it is in the mixed density residential, which allows the R three. So it's a desired development. And, um, there's only a, a couple of things, uh, actually the bottom is what I spoke with Buck about today. Uh, is that, uh, no matter what, the, the traffic study is outdated, so, uh, we're gonna need an updated traffic study. And because, and let me go back to. This is the entrance into off of Mcdale, so it's a critical, you know, when phase one expired, it impacted everything else and they're unable to construct on there because this is the first phase. And so now these three are in jeopardy, but, uh, because there are three, you know, because they're consistent with future land use map, that is why, uh, uh, let's see, let me go back again, sorry about that. That on the second one, and where, uh, staff is asking the planning commission to actually extend that one, they can come back for phase one redesign. And one of the things that, uh, was requested by staff to match up with our subdivision was to put a stub, uh, somewhere in phase two in order to make internal connections, which is a requirement now of our subdivision regulations. Now, what we're giving up, um, what the city, what I'm suggesting that the city concede on is not, uh, if two, three, and four are approved to be extended, then, um, they wouldn't have to meet some of the, um, green space requirement that are currently within our code. Um, but I figured that the trade-off, not having that direct access on there, um, it, and then also the traffic study as well as the, uh, the one internal connection is a benefit for the city. And so it's a good trade-off, in my opinion.
So what are some of the differences in the subdivision regulations? That if, if we allow the vested rights to go forward on those additional phases, what have we updated in our subdivision regulations? Is there stuff on sidewalks that we might lose? Is there road width changes that we've made since this was approved?
No, there's no changes in the road width. The road widths have been this pretty similar to for quite some time. And I think that if you look at, uh, this is phase one, you can see that there's already sidewalks along there. So, so what's being lost is really, I guess the most, the biggest one is just the five percent. Um, cause R one, R two, and R three are the most flexible zoning districts as far as residential goes. And so there's not a lot of high standards on those, like you would see with the multifamily or the PUD.
So we've not made a lot of changes for subdivision rights on number three?
No, no. I'll entertain any questions if you might have any.
Go back to the, one, let her see what it is. Our access, what we're talking about phase one is those that are facing Mcdale, which is the bottom line there, right?
That's correct.
Okay, how, two, three, and four will actually access Mcdale at one location?
Yes, and that, and that's all that's required on with the number of units. The, what, uh, Buck has requested is that there is a connection this way, so that for any future development.
Does it give a connection which way? I didn't understand that.
I, I think what, I think what Buck is asking is that the connection be this, because this is towards two thirty-one.
What's it gonna connect to?
I don't, I, I, that, that's the part that I spoke with Nathan earlier, is that we're probably gonna have to sit down and discuss those things.
Yeah.
Because no matter what, with the amended amendment of phase one, it's gonna impact phase two.
It's going back to also.
You're right.
Yeah.
So, so what that might look like, that's the part that.
So, and I, I can't pick up on all the conversation. If, if you come out two, three, and four to come out on Mcdale, where are you gonna come out? Right there?
Yeah, yeah, well, there's nothing there now because it's, that's expired.
I'm saying, you know, at the other end of Mcdale, some people have recommended to put that as a cul-de-sac and try to cut a new.
Yeah. Uh, where's this?
And, and put a.
Two thirty-one, uh, but that's not really.
Some, uh, commercial buildings along that two thirty-one right there. And to have a red light across on one of the properties that's been constructed on the other side.
How would that affect?
I don't know, because, uh, when we sat down and discussed that, and I think that impacted, uh, Mr. Voice's decision too at the time. Yeah, um, it, there were several, or there's several different iterations of it at this point. The first one that we looked at, I believe it was cutting across here somewhere, somewhere down this direction over here, but I don't know. You know, it was never, it, it, even though it was hard line drawn, it was still concept level. And I think it's even changed at this point.
I just, I almost could look at the big picture.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, and, uh.
Yeah, and the, and that affected Mr. Voice's decision too, which was part of the reason why he delayed it and then.
Yeah, I think Mcdale Lane in the frontage right there on Mcdale Lane is the concern, but if they go back to the board on that, that can change at a later date. The concern now is two, three, and four and how they're gonna get that access, right?
Uh, really, it was just two that.
Just two, okay, just two.
Yeah, yeah, and the reason why four is critical is because the infrastructure coming in.
One, it, one is no decision, it's, um, I mean, our decision, it's, it's law. I mean, we would like to see, I know the planning mission would like to see on that, that redesigned on that phase one on the, on the Mcdale there, you know?
Yes.
And, uh, so as far as the decision denied, I think you, you say, I see on the recommendations, like, you know, you got A, B, C, D, what, go back over those again.
So.
Like, are options here?
Yeah, so what I was thinking, and, and I don't, I don't have a finite time. And since the, since Nathan, the fixer is here, uh, he might be able to, he inherited, he inherited a lot of the. Yeah, that's so, but, um, uh, I, I don't know how quickly or how much time is necessary to, uh, submit a new design and having to go through that, I don't know that. And that's why I only put in here, I generalized that those two. I don't know if it's six months or, um, I, I, I wouldn't recommend too, too much time on it. Um, but, you know, that's, that's really, I'm not sure about how long it would take to do a new design for phase one, how it might impact two, three, and four. You know, that's, that's gonna be, and, and that was the reason why when I, uh, wrote this, the approval of phase two, variance for that, um, that, that would be extended because that's coming up in, uh, in, uh, four or five days. Uh, three and four connected up to phase two's timeline. Um, and then, um, if the planning commission is okay with it, uh, we can go back to, uh, with the developer and the designer and, and, and see what, what's the possibilities, you know? How that might come, how that might look when they can submit it.
The phase one, was it supposed to be R one or R two? Says single family homes.
They're R three, they're, this whole development is R.
Three?
Yes. Yes, and if you look at the plan here, these are all R three and, um.
Seventy-five hundred feet or something like that.
Actually, I don't, I don't have, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, seventy-five hundred is the min, is the minimum for R three. And then fifteen thousand for, um, duplex, which I think, uh, I can't tell if these ones were planned because that might be a stormwater feature, I'm not sure, so. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, I could, getting to your particular question. What is in front of you is a variance to extend the vested rights. To extend the vested rights, they have the right to develop as it already is. So I just wanna make certain, particularly on item one, because it's already expired. That is the one is because Tom has said has been problematic. Um, I think what Tom is saying, if you deny number one, they have to come in with a whole new plan. It's not even amendment, it has to be a new plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
And, and not only that, is that when number one, since it's expired and if the commission denies it, it, it basically creates the, uh, condition where there has to be a redesign. You know, of some type. And, and what I'm trying to do is just, um, mitigate the, the impact of having to do a whole new subdivision for Mr. Voice. Uh, because it is a, it, it was a, or it is a significant investment.
A lot of good, there's a lot of good vested vision, but I think currently there's a few tweaks that could be made.
Sure, and, and if it was, um, if it's, uh, if it didn't meet the future land use map, I think it would have, it could go in a different direction. Uh, but since it's consistent with it and single family is a desired, um, you know, housing type, then that was, that was what was weighed on a lot of the, and I, and I can tell you, I didn't have a lot of, it, it was very challenging just to come to this point, because I was trying to balance out and there's not a lot of reference points for this, so.
So back to the other two, three, and four, you're recommending that they do extend vested rights solely for the purpose to make an amendment, is that?
That's correct.
The proper way to put it?
That's correct.
That's why your motion would need to be. Cause what I, I, I gather, I mean, if you extend vested rights, they can build it as it's designed. But the reality on the ground is they can't build it without phase one.
That's correct.
And what would the amendment be?
Five, you know, I did.
Yeah, that, that's the unknown part, because it's impacted by whatever the phase one portion of it is.
My concern with granting the variance on two, three, and four, is there any chance that they could redesign phase one and we can end up with phase five and six like they look up there, because we don't want phase five and six.
Oh, no, 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 don't, don't, maybe I should have just put white on the.
So they can't come back with five and six looking like.
They were never, there's never been a preliminary. Yeah, there's no preliminary plat on it. And, and I know Mr. Voice has, uh, mentioned that they're considering the, the entire, you know, comprehensive view of it, so.
So what Tom, I think, is attempting, if you, if you deny it all, they have to basically start over with their plan?
That is correct.
So he's attempting to just allow them to do two, three, and four, do an amendment.
The kind of balance out.
Start from the beginning, does that?
That is correct.
So.
Same end result for us, if you do that, that McGee did. We're going to redo.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's what they mentioned.
But we're actually gonna have to have two votes now, we're, two different things on here, so. Beats and remember you.
Right.
We're going to phase one first and then the other one will be next, so.
Mr. Chairman, you might want to have to give Mr. Voice an opportunity to speak if he wants to address the board.
Yes, sure. It's our fault that we left the vested rights laps. We didn't understand our first subdivision in the city, that's on us. But we had no idea, when we had the pre-construction reading, I didn't go to that, Jason did. And, you can come up here on Twitter.
No, I don't know, go ahead.
Anyway, he was under the impression that we had two years from the day of that meeting to start. Okay, we're in the process of getting our bids, whatever. Well, we go up to get a grading permit back in January, maybe? And, and we couldn't get one because the vested rights had left, so that was our fault. Uh, I agree with that. But one thing that I have a problem with is why did it get approved the first time? And why is it now a problem? You know, why didn't we, before we spent these hundreds of thousands of dollars, why didn't they tell us we couldn't front the Mcdale Lane with the, with lots? You know, now we've done, spent all this money and it's, might as well be thrown a hole, we're gonna have to start all over, you know? And.
I know that's our home, yes.
We've improved a lot of houses.
Long that are, do that are.
Yet, a lot of them have not been built yet, but we have to take that into consideration.
Right.
That even they're not, though they're not built yet, they're going to be built probably.
Yeah.
And it's going to be an issue. And I'm not against your project, but yeah, that, that Mcdale Lane's gonna be a problem. There's no way around it.
We made it's gonna be a problem.
The, the track, look how many houses you gotta come down on Mcdale Lane.
Yeah, we're not gonna do the next section like that, and I'm okay with giving up half, the majority of the lots on the road, there. Do what?
Yeah, maybe I should have just covered up that section.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I thought the red X might.
There's actually thirteen lots on the road, first by.
Okay. I'll make a motion to deny the variance.
This is out of mind.
Yeah. Out of mind, yeah, for phase one.
Yes, this is out of mind.
And Mr. Voice said that it was approved before, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The, with the access on Mcdale of those individual lots?
Yes, so, well, well, let me, let me just explain a little bit of it. So what happened was is that there was a transition during that time period as well with the, uh, the planning director. And so there were, um, the plans were not distributed to the, um, Shelbyville power as well as our city engineer. And as a follow-up, the city engineer had, um, uh, mentioned that this was not reviewed properly vetted. And then that would have caught that at that point, because, uh, the, at that time, even if, uh, this, this would have not been permitted at that time. But because it had gone through the planning commission at that point, there was a certain amount of rights that the property owner had, and, and that was the construction as it is. And, uh, so, you know, that, that was the, that was the choice, so.
When did that happen?
Over five years ago.
Yeah.
Five years ago, that was right before Wally came.
Before that.
Yeah, it, it was even, yeah, it was two thousand nineteen, so it was six years ago.
If I make, this was approved and then, I don't know, a year or two later, it actually even had an amendment. The amendment got treated as a brand-new application.
Yes.
So it goes along that, we probably had to.
We have a motion in the second, I'm sorry.
You can finish the issue.
Yeah.
Okay. We do have one motion, it's unfavorable, right, sir?
Uh, it means he's already taken.
Okay.
This would be a den, denial as sorts of proof.
So we have a motion to deny, so if you agree with that, Buck, yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Commissioner Will Hoyt?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
And Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
So that variance is denied.
Okay, now Jay, now this is the other part. I'll go ahead and read that, everybody understands what we're doing here. Baker subdivision variance for vested rights for phase two, Mcdale Point subdivision, formerly U Haven subdivision. Single family lots on Mcdale Lane, tax map sixty-nine, partial five point oh eight. St. John Engineering, representing Gary Boyce Construction LLC. Owner is requesting extension of vested rights in accordance to Shelbyville municipal submitted regulations. Article two, section two, dash thirteen, six. Phase two, twenty-three single family lots on partial totaling five point seven five acres on R three, medium density residential. Vested rights is set to expire for this phase, May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make a motion on this one to, uh, to grant the amendment for the vested rights. Do I need a time limit on that?
You mean to grant the variance?
Grant the variance, the amendment of the variance.
Oh, let's see.
Totally.
Well, you want the, to, to extend it, the vested rights, just up to two, three, four? Oh, I guess.
Yes, and, and I wanna, yeah, so.
Just phase two.
Yeah, so let me just go back to my, uh, uh, comments here. So, um, three and four is coming up in July, it hasn't expired yet. Um, so, uh, I, I recommended that the developer submit. Um, so, uh, I, I recommended that the developer submit those variances as well, but the time with whatever phase two. Now, I don't know, is, do you think six months is good, or, um?
Or submitting phase two through four?
Oh, no, phase one, um, to redesign phase one, that would connect up to the amendments of two.
And you have to have a pre-construction meeting, uh, six months.
Uh, no, no, because, yeah, because phase one is a whole new application. So once that is approved, however that impacts two, three and four, um, uh, the, the amendment part of it will impact two, three and four. So that'll all, they'll all launch together.
Tom, if I may, what you're saying is at the time that they submit a new plat, whole new plat, whole new application for phase one, at the same time, they would be submitting amendment applications for two, three and four. Of course, the only thing you've got in front of you here tonight on this is phase two, you don't have three and four, but phase two.
Yes.
So what you were trying to recommend is a phase of time that allows them to bring in all at one time.
That would be.
Phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four.
But that, I, I think that that would be the most prudent way, uh, at least for the commission, um, to look at this cohesively. So, I mean, I, and I don't know if that, that's achievable or not, I mean, um, for tonight, it's just, uh, it's just a phase two, and whatever amendment, and you can think about it, and then come back, and as far as that goes.
The vested rights would go down as soon as the planning commission approved anything new, so.
Being that this is just, uh, variance on phase two, uh, the vested rights on phases three and four are not, that.
That, that's not until July, I mean, yeah, so that.
But even if we approve this, uh, the extension for phase two for six months, that doesn't affect phase three and four.
That's correct.
We would need to request variance for phases three and four, assuming, you know, everything stays the same similar as it is. Say six months.
If that. Then if you look at my, oh, two, that, uh, if there's any kind of expiration, that there's no other.
That's, that's, yes. So, uh, motion, I've got a motion on the table, um, to, to extend the vested rights for a period of six months.
Would you please, let's make that a date, a date, sir.
Let's make that a certain date. Oh, yeah. Oh, that would be what, November?
That'd be November?
November twenty-third, uh, let's see, what is November twenty-third, make sure it's not.
It's a Saturday.
It may November twenty-second, we just said, or maybe so. It's, uh, Friday before the twenty-first, or the Monday after the twenty-fourth?
Whatever, what do y'all have, say, mind your act, or give them a little, an extra weekend?
Monday, the twenty-fourth, November.
Yes, uh, may I just ask a question on that? Uh, when would the planning commission meeting occur in November?
That's a very.
It's actually.
Yeah, that's what, make sure, because this is, you know.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, the throes of original Thanksgiving.
We, we moved to the third Thursday.
Thanksgiving is the twenty-fourth.
Oh, no, I don't think it's a third Thursday.
It's a Tuesday or something.
I think it's a Tuesday, hold on, I think it's eighteen.
No, it's the twenty-fifth.
Oh, really?
The one in November is the twenty-fifth, because it's on Tuesday.
Okay.
The one in December moves to the eighteen.
Oh, that's what I was thinking about, it's Christmas.
You may, you may wish to be, you know, extend those vested rights past your planning commission date.
The twenty-third, okay, yes, I see there. Okay, let's just, um, what do y'all think, December first, is that good, is that a good date, do they?
Uh, it's a Monday.
Okay, let's just do December first, twenty-eight, twenty-five. December first, twenty-five. That it would, that it would expire, and then, as we have agreed on, that that would be the final expiration.
Okay, what about this stuff road, does that need to be in the, are we requiring a stub?
I, we don't even know what the design change is, um, yet, because if they do phase one, it's gonna impact phase two, how that looks.
My question is, where's this stuff road going to go?
That.
I'm so confused.
Yeah, y'all gonna have.
Well, and, and that is why, when I, um, mentioned it to Nathan, I don't know, um, you know, I think, because, well, but not only that, it's because, um, we don't know what phase one looks like, and it's gonna impact phase two, so.
Yeah, there.
I, I, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna deal in concepts.
Yeah, and I tried to contact Public Works about this, uh, have a guy respond back, because I was, we, we were all, I was like, where he was indicating.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know either, so.
About this stuff road, I, I guess that's coming from Public Works in, in hopes that it would encourage the person next door to develop, if they develop a subdivision, they're gonna run into that.
I just don't know how we're gonna hold a good stuff road if we don't. I mean, if we just extend the nesting on this second phase like it is, if they find a way to tie into the design like it is, not allow the condition that requires that stuff room.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Redesign phase one, it's not a big place to, what are we really agreeing to?
Yeah.
I love. Seems like one shield on a period.
I, I would have thought that too, but I think.
But, and, and I don't know how critical that element is.
It may not, and I think that it's always, you know, it, it's, it's given a little, uh, uh, period to the, to the owner to maybe.
Sure, sure.
I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, because no matter what, there's, uh, the impact of the traffic study, you know, that's, there's been a lot of changes since that one, so.
Um, I think that it will, though, it will affect, you know, the, the development, I mean, he said to himself, I mean, you know, that, that does, but I believe that it will still, it'll still be able to gain something, um, out of extending this, uh, but that we have to be a new plan in the road, it'll be a big issue, yeah.
And, and personally, uh, I'm just glad of the houses that are moved off of McDale.
I think staff, I think staff and then the owners will have to just, you know, just have to talk it out and, everybody involved and come to a solution, I think that could work out for everybody involved.
Yeah, and it's not the major thing, you know, the major thing was the, um, the lots on McDale.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
What was your last motion?
I currently have a motion on the floor to grant the variance for a six-month period to date, certain date, December first, December first, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have to say?
Thank you, Dave, thank you, bye-bye.
Motion, Dan, for last second? Do I have another motion?
I make the motion to deny the variance, I think we just need a redesign.
Yeah. Okay, now the motion to deny. Second. I see. Motion made, seconded. Yes, take. Roll call, then you will vote yes if you want to deny.
I'm sorry, just a second, I gotta catch up. So your motion, Mr. Blavins, is to deny the variance, the extension of the variance altogether?
Correct, on phase two, yes.
And Mr. Philip Shackleton, so as I call your name, you'll say yes if you agree to deny the variance. Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
No. Commissioner Taylor? Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Commissioner Willhoyt?
No.
Mayor Carroll?
No.
Commissioner Gill?
No.
Chairman Landers?
No.
I have one, two, three yeses, one, two, three, four, five no's. Motion fails.
Yeah. Man.
I, so.
Do you wanna have a no? It gets tricky, it's tricky, and I understand it all, I didn't have to say it.
I don't know what else, I don't know what else to do but, uh, to, just to motion, uh, motion it to ex- uh, extend the, the vested rights period to twelve, one, twenty, twenty-five, as a, as an amendment. That's my motion, last second.
Yeah, I will say. Okay, do have a second this time. All right, so you want to extend it, you will vote yes. Roll call.
Sorry, I don't have it on the paper, it's not moving. Okay, so if you want to extend the vested rights for a six-month period to December first, twenty twenty-five, you will vote yes when I call your name. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Blavins?
No.
Commissioner Willhoyt?
Yeah.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Chairman Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
No.
So at that time, I have one, two, three, four, five yeses, and three no's, so the motion does pass.
Okay. Staff reports, administrative approval spending, North Main Street, tax map sixty-nine J through A, partial six, two sixteen, two hundred and sixty square foot self-service ice facility, site land application, partial zone C two, general business.
Okay, um, so this item is a, uh, it's a self-serve ice facility, uh, two hundred and sixteen square feet located at the intersection of Decatur Street and two thirty-one. Um, this is the unit. Finally, the ice magnus, uh, have his, uh, have his, uh, unit, and, and then, uh, what he's proposing, uh, is the type of skirting that you see at the bottom, which is a, um, uh, just more substantial material to put in the base. Uh, it met all of staff's criteria, so he's at the building permit, accessory permit level, and anybody that wants to get ice, that's where you go. Um, I was supposed to go on, I forgot, I was getting a little too ju- jumpy there.
All right, and then we got.
Jeff, get a jumpy in here, it's hot.
Okay, and then we got four hundred East Lane Street, tax map eighty-nine G, group C, partial one, five hundred and seventy-six square foot storage building, site plan application, zone C two, general business.
Uh, this is circle friends, they just have a storage unit in the back of their building, and, uh, these items, uh, and, and I will be proposing in the future some, uh, a speedier process, so, so that we're not having to do this, um, especially for items that are small like this, but since this was in the commercial zone, it was required to, um, uh, have a site plan. Um, you can see it's, it's located just on the backside of this building, it's all permanent foundation. They're proposing use hard structure like either, uh, hardy plank or, uh, wood material for it, so, um, that one received approval as well, administrative approval.
Okay. Two oh eight Theory Street, tax map eighty-nine G, which seats partial number fourteen point oh two, fourteen oh three, lot line shift, and we talked about this a while ago, under planning commission decisions, partial is own, uh, C two, general business.
Yes, uh, so this is a minor subdivision process, it's a lot line shift that was necessary. You can see it was necessary to, in order to accommodate the, the parking lot area. Uh, and then I, I should mention, actually, my notes in red there, that the shared parking and the access easements will be created once this plat is removed.
All right, Vine Street, Lexington Boulevard, uh, we had talked about that one too. Tax map seventy-nine, partials twenty-three and twenty-three point oh four, preserving Lexington Cove, and this is the structural review. Uh, the partials are zone PUD, plan unit belt.
Yep, uh, so these are all the construction items that Will, um, and Buck, and Brian, Dicky, as well as John Freeman and Jared Dickens are reviewing. Um, the PUD phase one construction, as well as Green Lane, Stonewall subdivision number two, oh, I guess I jumped.
All right. And Green Lane, tax map seventy-eight, partial eleven, Stonewall Run subdivision, phase two, construction review, partial zone R three, medium density residential.
Yes, um, so that's another one, that's, uh, that's the Stonewall. That's real.
All right.
And then last item, I just wanted to show you what, uh, we had a planning commission committee, uh, on five twelve, and, um, this one doesn't quite capture all the things that we're, uh, working on in the next couple of months. And I can tell you that the application that was heading to the planning commission in June, it's gonna take a little bit longer. So we probably won't have any applications, so I'm hoping to have some of these items brought forward, uh, either at least for discussion, and maybe not voting, but at least for discussion.
Looks like that's it.
Motion to adjourn, which they had adjourned.